I will load that. So the first order of business after a roll call will now be our approval of minutes. We do have minutes from three meetings available, five twenty, five twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, five twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, and our six-one, twenty twenty-two draft minutes. Assuming everybody has had a chance to look at that. Can I, and Alder, I think for the record, we can note that Alder Figaro Cole has joined us. So, thank you. Can I get a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns, corrections, et cetera, with those minutes? Okay, not seeing anybody, any. I'm going to assume approval by anonymous consent. We do have a CCEC recommended alter present with us. Bill was present with us today. Does anybody have any objections if he contributes to the hybrid discussion? I know he's not a confirmed member of the council yet, but he did talk a lot about his experience with hybrid, and I thought it might be helpful for him to join us today. Is there any objection with him participating in the discussion? Seeing none, I appreciate that. So I'm trying to load the registrant list, so give me one second to see if we have any public comment. While I do that, we could jump very quickly to disclosures and recusals. Does anybody have any disclosures and recusals? Okay, not seeing any. That's good. I'm going to just see if we have any registrants today for our meeting. Okay, we do have, we do have registrants for some of the items where that were possibly going to be, or likely going to be referring, but we'll get to that when we get to that. And so we have nobody under general public comment. So the first item for consideration this evening is on our agenda as seven-one, six-one, seven. A substitute amending various sections of the Madison General Ordinance to correct inconsistencies and improper, improper references in the Madison General Ordinances constituting the twenty-twenty-two city attorneys revisers ordinance. Our attorney is here to explain this really complicated thing that we're taking up. Attorney House, would you like to tell us what we're looking at tonight?
Yes, thank you. The, the ordinances authorize a city attorney to prepare a revisor ordinance, and we typically do this once or twice a year, and it's intended to really correct technical errors or things that we've noted, minor clarifications that need to be made in the ordinances. And we, we try to keep track throughout the year and then compile them and, and put them together in one document. So that's what you had before us. It's a kind of a hodgepodge of different sections. As you can see, some of them are just correcting typographical errors or citations or correcting a reference. So I can try to answer any questions about the specific subject matter, but that's kind of an overview of what this ordinance is about.
Thank you, Attorney House. Are there any questions for Attorney House about this item? Okay, not seeing any. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Unless I see otherwise, as you hand up, I'm going to assume approval by anonymous consent. All right. Thank you, Attorney House. We have, we have a few items on our agenda that it's been requested to be referred since Alder Healy was not able to join us this evening. We do have resident or a chair of a committee, Anne Kovach registered to speak on item number three. Anne, you're welcome to speak, but I do want to let you know that we were, we are likely going to refer this, this to our meeting on the twenty-ninth. I know you also sent in a note. Would you like to speak now about it? You want to wait to come back on the twenty-ninth? What works best for you? You're welcome to speak now if you'd like.
Well, I appreciate that. I think it would probably be best to wait to speak when you're actually going to be talking about it. I think that would probably be more, more relevant. I had a few things to add to what I wrote, but you know, the body of it is there, but I'd like to have an opportunity to, to speak to the group when you're going to be considering it and also be available for any questions.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, we'll make, we'll make sure that that's appropriately on the agenda for the twenty-ninth. And if it's not, and I will, I will personally reach out to you if, if I think we're going to refer it again, because you know, we don't have the right people available. So I do appreciate you coming tonight and look forward to hearing from you on the twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's not any objection, would Alders mind possibly making a motion to refer items number three, four, and five to our June twenty-ninth meeting? Can I get a second?
I can.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any unless I see a hand up. I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. All right, fantastic. One other item that also we're going, going to refer, and as long as there's no objection, I'd like to take item number nine out of order, list our number seven, zero, six, four, two, and also refer that to our June twenty-ninth meeting. But before we do that, just let this body know that this afternoon, we did receive an update from our EAP group in the city with some suggestions and help related to this, this policy and this discussion. So this item obviously has been referred a few times, and we haven't had an updated discussion about it. But we are, staff has not stopped working on improvements behind the scenes, and I think we're all eager to ask a bunch of questions and have some future discussion. But because the, one of the primary sponsors are actually, two of the primary sponsors have not been, are not able to be here tonight. There was a request that we move it to the meeting on the twenty-ninth. So if there's no objection, can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the referral? Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Can you disclose who, who staff is working on it?
Sure, our chief of staff is Karen. Yeah, Karen is taking up the lead on that work, and she's working, as I said. We got, we had a meeting with EAP about some of that stuff, and so they've given, they actually sent us a, an update on that today. You know, late this afternoon, and then there's other work looking at some stuff from other cities, et cetera. So, you know, I think it was important for everybody to know that this is not something that's standing still because, just because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it here.
Okay, I mean, I noticed there was a, a second version, but I'm confused about the wording on, on the body. So I'll reach out to Karen directly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks for the, for my, yeah, I just was reflecting on our meeting yesterday. I just can't remember if it was Bill or one of the other candidates for District Eleven, but somebody mentioned having some background or experience in, in this area. I don't know. If somebody remembers, maybe we could just reach out to whoever that was, and would love any input that they have if we're going to be referring this as well. So just, yeah.
We, we will, we will research that. Bill, was, did you talk about policies like, like, so this, this, this particular item is a common council prohibitive harassment indoor discrimination policy? Was that you who brought that up last night, or was that somebody else?
I don't believe I did bring that up, no.
Okay, we'll find out who that is, Alder Foster, and see if we can get some help there. Appreciate you remembering that. That was, that was a long evening, a lot of talk. So thank you. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. I'm going to assume unanimous consent on that referral, and we will move on to our next item, which is list our item seven-one, seven-nine, eight. What is hybrid? I'm going to share a presentation that was put together that will, that will help guide our discussion. This presentation is not going to be a, I'm going to show a bunch of slides, and then we're going to start talking. It really is intended to be interactive, especially towards the end of it. And so I will share my screen, and we can talk a little bit about what the agenda is for today and what some of our, what the future looks like and what some of the things we want to start thinking about. Let's see. My Zoom has disappeared. Because I don't do sharing of my screen very often and get frustrated when people don't do it right. Can somebody confirm that you see just the slide?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you for that. So, you know, tonight, tonight, the goal is to, to do some level setting on what is a hybrid, what is hybrid for a common council meeting with a very strong focus on what our first common council hybrid meeting would look like. We're going to talk a little about the status of the city county building, CCB Room Two-O-One, and the IT capacities related to that room. That room is, is where the common council meets when it has met in person. And we're going to discuss some policy questions the, the council needs to answer related to policy, policies related to hybrid. Future discussion on this. So to let people know that we will continue talking about this at our next meeting on six fifteen and possibly approve some recommendations for the council to consider for our seven-twelve hybrid meeting. COVID nineteen protocols will be talked more about. Public Health will actually come to our meeting on six fifteen to answer questions and talk a little about their recommendations. We have a little bit about that in today's slides. At our common council meeting on six twenty-one, that's where council will actually have the ability to decide if it wants to do a hybrid meeting on seven-twelve. And that's not a decision for CCEC. That's a decision for the entire council. And hopefully we'll have done enough work at the CCEC meetings and had enough discussion where people will feel comfortable making that, that decision and having that debate. We're not tonight going to be talking about committee hybrid policies or a framework for how committees are going to do their meetings. This is very specifically focused on common council meetings. And at some point, we, we do want to have discussions about how materials are shared at council meetings, both by the public and Alders, and the use of Zoom and technologies and stuff related to sharing stuff. We're not going to have that discussion tonight, but just wanted people to know that these are some of the things that we're going to think about. I didn't listen here, but I do, I do think that we should be, you know, good about learning from our experiences when we finally do go hybrid. You know, we may set some policies for the first meeting that we'll find out didn't work well. So I think we should just, you know, know that we're, we're all going to be open to iterating and learning from our experiences. We still have a handful of Alders that have not had in-person meetings experience because of the pandemic. And so I think we're all going to learn a lot in our first experience. So we, we don't all have to, we don't have to get it right the first time, but hopefully we can get close. Whoops. So very, very simply, starting out with what is a definition of hybrid? The very simple definition of hybrid is a meeting that attendees are not one hundred percent in person, nor attendees, you know, a hundred percent virtual. And so that, you know, it's a very basic, but, but important way to look, understand, you know, it's, some people are in person, some people are virtual, and that's considered a hybrid meeting. When we so, so that, that's a definition, you know, one, I did want to give an update on, on, on the common council, the city county building, Room Two-O-One upgrade. I'm at an opportunity to be in there the other day to see some of the upgrades. They're not completely finished, but in this picture, for people that have been in that room before, you can see there's a new microphone. In that picture to the left, there's also a huge projector that's in the ceiling there. And that projector you can see on the right actually shows an image behind where the chair sits. And that image can be shown with the lights on. That wasn't previous capability that existed in that room. And so when we're in a hybrid situation, the Zoom meeting and, in some form, would be behind the chair. So you would see participants that are virtual show up there. The technology upgrade in Two-O-One is expected to be completed soon. New equipment has included a, that, that big fancy projector. The TV screens for the public on the side have been updated and they work. There's new microphones and a room control device, and there's also the Zoom room device, which can be used to send, send Zoom meetings to both the projector and the TV. There's a goal to have two mock council meetings in late June. And then knowing that it's probably going to be difficult to get people to come to those meetings or to get everybody to come to those meetings, there'll likely be a pre-training session, pre-meeting training session before the seven-twelve meeting, so people can see what they need to understand at the hybrid meeting. Sarah Edgerton is with us, and I'm going to interrupt for a moment and just ask if there's anything she wanted to add about Two-O-One that I did not cover or anything about the status that I didn't cover.
No, not at this point.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. So when we talk about hybrid, one of the things you'll see in these slides, and one of the things that I think is hopeful for the discussion is to think about the different participants that are going to take part in our meetings. And so for attendee types, we have the chair of the meeting, which for the common council, obviously, is the mayor. We have meeting clerks. We have members of the body, which is us, the Alders. We have city staff and members of the public. And so as we go through these slides, you're going to see a lot of references to these different attendee types. And I think when we're talking about this, we're certainly going to be focused on the, the experiences for each of those attendee types, because they're, they're going to be different. Some of them is going to be incredibly easy, and some of it's going to be, you know, a lot of complicated questions for us to figure out as a group and decide what makes sense. So one of the things that IT has provided with reference to this is some information related to Zoom and participants. I want to see, Sarah, do you want to go over this particular slide?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So going to what Alder Freeman was just referencing in the, in the previous slide, we have the attendee type and then the attendance type, and then can they join via Zoom? So the chair, the attendance type would be in person, and would they be able to join via Zoom? Yes, but they're going to be joining Zoom within the room of Two-O-One, and they will be one of the few who will be doing that. The meeting clerk, our lovely city clerks, they will be in attendance in person as well. And they will also be in that Zoom room that will be part of, they're basically, the Zoom room is just like another participant in the hybrid meeting, if, if that's the way you want to kind of envision it. And they'll be required to manage the participants and view the virtual attendees. And then there's the members of the body, you, and you can either be in person or you can be virtual. And do you want to join via Zoom? That again is optional. So that is your decision. City staff, they can, as attendance type, be in person or virtual, and then that will be up to the mayor to direct. City staff, if they need to be there, if they're not the ones clerking. So if it was, if it was me and I needed to, to be at the meeting, it would be up to her to, to make that decision if I should be there in person or if I can be virtual. And then we have, and we broke down the public into both in-person members of the public, and they would obviously be in person, and they would not join via Zoom. And then the virtual members of the public, they would be, their attendance type would be virtual, and they, of course, would join via Zoom. Any questions?
I will say also, a lot of this will, will definitely make more sense too when we're talking about the individual types, so we can refer back to that. So we're going to have a chair that talks about, a slide that talks about chair, for example. But hopefully this gives you at least a little bit of technical information on the thoughts that, that are considered for, for how Zoom is going to be. Thank you, Sarah. Meeting registration, important to let people know that the thought is that we will continue with the online registration. And so IT has a QR code that would be printed out for people to use when they're at the meeting on their smartphones to register. They could register online before the meeting, so you don't have to run the, you know, the meeting and fill out a piece of paper. You could, if you're at the meeting, you could register online using that QR code, typing in the URL. And this says that, that the idea would be register on paper also at the meeting, and then staff would fill it out. Any questions about the registration system? I, I think it's unfortunate that all new Alders won't experience having huge stacks of paper passed around that you can sort through to see who had registered. But obviously, it's, it's great that we'll continue to have that online portal that we have that shows us who registered for the meeting and see what districts they're in and where they stand, et cetera. I do have a question. I'm Sarah. This does, was there thought given on not having paper at the meeting and allowing people to use a shared device? And if so, you know, why, why wasn't that done?
So we talked about doing that and having a shared device. Quite frankly, it, it has more to do with demand right now, and do we actually have any available devices that we can share? And the answer is no. So, you know, we can certainly look at that in the future, but we also wanted our residents to feel comfortable with how they were doing it. And if they chose that they wanted to do it with paper, that, that would be fine as well, because we wanted to make sure that we were thinking about all residents and how they wanted to have that experience.
Be comfortable. Yeah, and I assume there's probably more capacity having people fill out paper than wait in a line to use a shared computer too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but at some point, we, if there's, if there's availability, you may put a shared computer there also to give people that option. Yeah, great. That's helpful. All right. So next, I wanted to give people a little bit of an overview of what we've received from Public Health about COVID gathering recommendations. This was information that was provided to the county board, who was having their first in-person meeting today, and very much matches information that's on the Public Health website as well as from the CDC. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not stuff that people haven't seen before. This, this, this particular recommendation is focused on us having a medium level, which is our current level. And it talks about, you know, you know, whether or not you're in high-risk categories and things to think about. Obviously, you know, big, strong push for people to be vaccinated, you know, having good ventilation in indoor spaces. If you're, if you're sick or isolating or quarantining, you should be staying home. And then also, you know, making it clear the CDC recommendations about distances. And we'll certainly be talking about that more at our next meeting, is that if, if you're not up to date on your vaccines, that, that you should be staying at least six feet apart, you know, especially if you're, you're high risk. If we were to go to a high rating, the big, the big change is much is, is wearing masks. We can and will, I'm sure, talk about a body, whether or not we want to require masks even in medium. We, we can make that determination and that decision as a body on what our policies are related to that. And we'll talk more about that, I assume, at our next meeting. Any questions about this? Okay, not seeing any. I believe Alder Bennett also may have joined us, but Alder Bennett, are you here? I don't see her. Hopefully she tries again. All right, so we're going to jump into the different types of, of participants and try to, try to make this a little bit more interactive than just having to listen to me. So we, I grouped in, in the same category, the chair, which is the mayor, council president, and meeting clerks. I think we all know that Mayor Satya has a strong desire to be in person. And I think talking to IT staff and talking to the mayor, I think there is a strong belief that it's, it's certainly a lot easier to manage both the room and the virtual participants with the chair, council president, and the meeting clerks in person. And so thought, questions, ideas, discussions on that concept of like, it's unlikely when we come up with our policies that we would say it's okay for those individuals to, to not be in person.
Is there any technological, and first off, President Freeman, I assume I have the ability to speak at this meeting.
You certainly do. The only, the only thing that I'll tell you for, for order's sake is in the future, just raise your hand. But I absolutely recognize you, and as an, you're more than welcome to participate in this meeting.
Okay, first off, my apologies. My company does not use the raise hand feature. We unmute and speak as, speak our minds. So I will try to get better about remembering that, but feel, feel free to chide me when I, when I do not. My, my question was going to be, is there any technical reason why we would want the, why we need the chair to be in the room if we wanted to have some option where the chair would be potentially remote? The mayor is traveling right now, and if she still wanted to be able to, to run the meeting, could she do that remotely?
I think I'd ask Sarah to answer that. I think there, it's obviously, you know, I, I think there's a policy preference there, but I don't know if there's a, a technical answer related to that.
So it's not so much a technical, Alder Paulson, it's more of a situational awareness. You know, there's not a queue. The queue is in the room. It's not available outside of the room, so that would be hard for her. So she needs to be able to have that. You know, she has noted that it is going to be quite a complex meeting for her to run in the hybrid, because she's going to have to have, I believe, four screens up to do this now.
Thank you, Sarah. Alders, help answer your question. Perfect. Alder Bennett, welcome.
Oh, um, I know I'm coming late. Would you mind sending me this presentation via email?
It, it's in your email. I sent it to Alders a few minutes before the meeting started. And I will say the good news is you have joined the meeting right when we're starting to talk about the different types of people. So you didn't miss a ton. I think you'll, you'll certainly be able to ju, jump into the conversation, and we're, we're a few slides away from the, probably the biggest discussion that we're going to have of the evening. So you certainly have good timing.
Awesome. Well, I guess I'm trying to understand. So the mayor would have to have four screens up. Is there any way staff could help with that difficulty?
Sure. Sarah, do you want to talk about the different screens that she has up? Because it's, it's definitely, it's, it's complicated.
Think we lost her.
Yeah, so while we wait for Sarah, I mean, I can, I can give you some idea. I mean, you know, I, having been through the, the training, the devices that are in front of the mayor or whoever the chair is, and there's one device that, that controls the microphones in the room that shows when somebody, and we're going to talk more about the queue later on, but when somebody puts their microphone on and they want to sign up to be in the queue, so it's similar to the raise hand feature, and then lets the mayor actually activate the microphones. There's another screen that's, another device that's related to Zoom. And so the mayor will have that. It's called a Zoom room device. The mayor will need to have the registration available for the, the people that are in, in the meeting or are registered for the meeting, and so she'll need to be able to see that. I don't, and then I know she was also going to have printed copies of the agenda because, or at least the, not the packet, but the agenda, because that's what luckily she likes to do. Otherwise, she'd likely be managing, getting another device having that. So she's going to be taking up a lot of room on that chair with, with different things to manage. I don't know if I'm missing something else, but Sarah, are you back with us? So, so it looks like we lost Sarah, but we could, we can get some more detail on that if I, if I left something out. Does that help answer your question, Alder Bennett?
It does, but I'm still wondering, like, so she's managing all these devices. Doesn't it have to be like just the mayor? Like, can staff help off, offset that? Or maybe, I don't, I know, I, I don't want to put more workload on council leadership, but I don't know if that's something.
Sure. So I, I definitely think there are probably ways for us to, to figure out how to work around that if we had to. And I think as a body, we would have to figure that out. I mean, I, you know, there were certainly instances, you know, I, I, I can't recall an instance of, of the mayor not being at one of our meetings. This mayor, I think our previous mayor, Mayor Soglan, I do remember him not being at meetings occasionally due to travel and the council president that would run the meeting. And so, you know, I think we can certainly look at some of those technical things. I, I think one of the things that's really difficult about these hybrid meetings is how much more staff it just requires, period, and trying to balance that. And so, you know, if you want the council president to do that, what, what am I being distracted from, to be honest? And am I waiting for, you know, Satya go, Keith, press this, you know, Keith, press that? It could get very weird very quickly, but we can certainly look at things. And I'd be, you know, I think it's worth also asking, you know, this, this mayor, is that something that you want to have the capacity to do? And if so, how can we work together to make that happen? I do think based on my discussions with the mayor, she, it, it sounds like she feels very strongly that in-person is a good thing. And I do think she feels very strongly that she should be in person as the chair. But does she want the flexibility to be able to travel and still chair the meeting? We, we can certainly ask her, and then we can certainly look at some of those technical things. So I think those are, those are good notes and good things we can follow up on. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Heck.
Thank you. I, I, I just wanted to recognize that as we ponder the, these, I'll call them assignments into different groups and who's going to the, these, I'll call them assignments into different groups and who's going to end up being in person or not. That we're, we're also making decisions for people who may be in that role, who are currently not in that role. And you, you, you mentioned that, that if you were to chair the meeting in the mayor's absence. And if the, the council vice president were to take on the role of the president, if, if that were to happen, we're we're, we're kind of making assumptions both now and in the future for future council presidents and vice presidents. So I, I just wanted to recognize, we'll have to think about that as we, as we figure out our path forward. If, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I think you're right. But I, I do want to say, I, I hopefully our focus, because, because you can go down that whole path of, you know, what should we be doing long-term is, is knowing that we really are focused on that first meeting or the first few meetings. And then also think about that. There's nothing wrong with us coming back in July going, how can we do this differently? Because that, that was terrible or, or, you know, and so, you know, I think, I think we need to be open to, you know, iterate this process.
Thanks. I'm glad you reminded me of, of that point that you made earlier. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I think since we're really focused on, on kind of the, the first or first several, and since the current mayor would like to be in person anyway, I don't, I think this all makes sense. I don't think we have to. I'd prefer not to figure out how to do it virtual if, if she's not really interested in doing that anyway. My questions, I had two of them. One, and Alder Heck actually just alluded to a little bit. Do, is there any reasons to, if we don't have protocols established for chairing virtually? Should the vice president be also in attendance in person? I mean, one, I would say certainly if we knew that the mayor was going to be absent and the, and the council president was going to be chairing, to at least have that backup person to do the same. And then also this, I mean, the whole sergeant-at-arms thing, which, you know, maybe we need to, to look at, but technically I think it's, it's in place. So I don't know, just a question, should we talk through vice president? And is there any reason to lump into the same category? And then my second question, which maybe we can get to in a different section is just this question around the, the queuing process and the mic muting, unmuting and understanding, maybe when we get to the, members of the body section, are we going to have two different queues? So folks that would be participating via Zoom, raising their hand. Folks that are in the room hitting the button and what's kind of what's our thinking around how to manage two different queues? And are we working on a way to have, to maintain our current visibility around the queue that we have with our Zoom meetings that we didn't used to have during in-person? Cause I've found that to be very valuable as a member of the body. Sometimes I take my hand down if I know that somebody else has their hand up that, you know, can, can respond to a point that I might have otherwise. So I don't know if we want to talk about that now or in a different section.
I'd probably rather wait for it to be in the different section, if that's okay.
Sure.
Vice President Curry, I'm going to put you on the spot. Try to think about it, not just from a personal standpoint, but a, a position standpoint. Do you have any thoughts on grouping the vice president into this particular category? Of being in person and helping manage things?
I think my definition of leadership, that that would be a thoughtful consideration. But I guess I hadn't thought about it in that term since. Yeah, I think setting aside personally thinking about it, that that would be a strong grouping. And some of the conversations we've had about some in-person things and such as safety and helping with anything in person or some comments or deliberations that need to be made. I think as many people in, in person would be helpful. And then folks kind of in those leadership roles, being able to manage the difficulty. So I would go with pairing VP in there.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. Okay. I think there are some good questions there, but I do think we probably have a pretty good plan for the first meeting, the first few meetings, which is adding the vice president to this grouping and saying that, that those people should be there and, and should be ready to, to chair the meeting and, and do the different stuff. So. I'm going to move on to city staff as a, as our next grouping for participants. And, and talk a little about that. Technically it is possible for them to be either in person or virtual. As Sarah had mentioned, the mayor would coordinate city staff in person or virtual attendance. Some questions for people to think about, if, if we have any thoughts on requiring any particular staff to be there in person. And we've talked about the staff clerking it, needing to be there. And any ideas related to this? And so, you know, I think, you know, I will, I will start by saying, I think it will be helpful for our chief of staff to be in person, for example. I don't know if I, I, off the top of my head, have any other examples of people that I think are helpful to, or a good idea, but I'm curious what people's thoughts are on staff participation in a hybrid format. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
I strongly believe that it should be up to the discussion of the staff members if they want to be in person or not. The meetings are long and it's arduous for our staff members to stay there the entire meeting, especially in person. So I think that they should be able to attend virtually in a hybrid format if we can make that happen.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
I don't disagree with Alder Bennett, but I will add to that the, the virtual setting should definitely be encouraged. I mean, there's no need to have, to have them, you know, in person. They, they do, they have proven to be able to do a great job through the current setting. Because we still on these COVID conditions, there's no sense to have so many extra people in the room. I think that needs to be, that should be part of the evaluation.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Thank you. I found the raise hand button. I, by and large, would prefer that most staff be at home wherever possible to make their lives easier. I've always felt terrible for the staff who has to sit there till 3:00 AM. Just in case someone wants to call on them. The one staff member I think that I might want to have beyond presence, and I'm sorry, Attorney Haas. I think it's probably sensible that the city attorney is there. And actually, the scenario that I'm sort of worried about is what happens to the meeting if all the technology breaks down? And how does the meeting proceed? What, what happens if, if we suddenly lose quorum because Zoom crashes? And so, so I think having the city attorney nearby, the presiding officer with, with no technology in between might make a lot of sense. But I do feel terrible about asking any staff to, to have to be in the room.
Alder, you brought up a great point, which is what does happen if Zoom breaks down? I mean, in the virtual format of Zoom breaks down, we're just done. And in the hybrid format of Zoom breaks down, do we continue a meeting without having a bunch of our colleagues available? Is that the right way to be doing city business? I think that's, that's something that we really should be talking about more. You know, even if we still have quorum, it still might not be respectful to, you know, the, those virtual alders to not be able to participate. So as, as we talk about members of the body participation, I, I am very curious for us to, to look at that. Did you have a specific question for, for Alder, for Attorney Haas that I may have stepped on? Or was that just more of a, a statement on it's a good idea for him to be there?
No, that was just sort of a, it's a good idea for him to be there in part. I actually do have one specific question, I guess, thinking about it. If we do lose quorum, is, how does, is there a quorum to, to actually make a motion to adjourn and how that works? But we can come back to those sorts of technical details much later.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about actually what, what, what should be quorum in a hybrid meeting too. So for example, you know, should we have a certain amount of people in person period for that meeting to be considered hybrid? And so maybe we could, we can put that there. Attorney Haas, do you want to talk about what happens if we don't have enough people? How, what that, what happens with quorum? And I also want to note, I mean, that's not a fake background by Attorney Haas. He is always in the office during the meeting. So I'm pretty sure he's not going to be, have a problem going down a few levels and joining us in person.
You know, the council meetings are always the highlight of my week, every other week. And so the mayor and I have talked about that. I mean, I think the expectations always been that the I would be there, somebody from our office would be there. And, and just by the way, I mean, the discussion, I think amongst, you know, the mayor serves as our supervisor as department heads. And so I think the expectation is that the mayor would, would determine if it's important for specific department heads to be in person to make presentations or to, to help out. And, and so I think that's from both the mayor and the management staff. I think that's probably the expectation and the discussion about, you know, other staff that may not be, may not have anything on the agenda. You know, that's where the question's coming about hybrid or virtual. As far as a quorum, you know, right now, the ordinance says a quorum is 14. And so I think that the, the question for the council would be, as Alder Furman said, President Furman said, does that mean 14 in person? Or a certain number out of 14? Or you just count everybody total in person and virtual? I think if, you know, obviously with Zoom meetings, the quorum has been 14 people appearing virtually. So unless there's a change in the ordinance, I guess the way I would look at it is if virtual attendance is allowed, then you count everybody appearing virtually towards a quorum. And if the, if the, if the council wants to, you know, depart from that, then there should be either a change in the ordinance or maybe a, a temporary resolution until this hybrid meeting format gets worked out. But I think the, the default would be if there's 14 people in person and, and appearing virtually, then you have quorum.
Attorney Haas, what happens if we lose quorum at a council meeting, regardless of where it is?
Right. Yeah. If you lose quorum, then the meeting has to end. You, the only thing you do is say, you know, you can discuss one, there might be a, another meeting. But otherwise, the otherwise the media will say, no, you know, as with, with Zoom meetings of, if you drop under a quorum because somebody has to take a break or you have to wait a few minutes, you know, that's fine. But if you permanently lose quorum, then you have to stop the meeting.
Am I right in remembering I, there's like a 15 minute rule related to that?
That's it. You know, the ordinance spells that out for the beginning of meetings. But, you know, I think there's this kind of a, if it happens during a meeting, I think it's sort of a reasonable and standard. How long does a body want to wait to determine if there's going to be a quorum reappearing?
And obviously nothing would happen, be able to happen. You know, decisions by the body while you don't have quorum and then, but you know, you, you could have a reasonable waiting period to try to resume quorum.
You could certainly take a recess and people could try to, you know, contact others to see if they're going to be available.
Would you be willing to pick, pick people up in their car to help resume?
If I get a city vehicle, sure.
Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Especially today's gas prices.
I mean, I think I, I, if I'm not mistaken, I got ahead of the presentation that you sent. And there will be, part of the discussion is to determine if you want to have 14 people in the room. Right? So we can guarantee quorum in the room. And people that are coming online, they need to understand as a business rule or whatever. I don't know if you have to make an ordinance out of it, but that if you drop, they could drop, they could drop and the meeting resumes without you. So the question about being fair or unfair should not be, should be pre arranged, you know, as part of these discussions. Like we'll have 14 people in the room to, to have quorum. And, and people in the technology world, that's just what we have experienced all along for the last two years. It, it is a chance that we are, we have to take. And at the beginning of this test trial, we definitely want to encourage to have more than 14 people in the room. Because chances are that things are going to blow up. I mean, we should not go, go into these first two, two meetings thinking that everything is going to be perfectly fine. We should be coming into it with. Sure, that's a little bit over on. So I mean, we should, in fact, we should, I, I would encourage, even if we are all in the room, to have a couple of us sitting somewhere else in the building and be, and be practicing from, from the Zoom version. But yeah, I think it's critical that we have, we get 14 people that we got a quorum by having them in person. And that will just require some organizational skills, but we do that for every other committee. I mean, I get emails from, from committees all the time. Are you going to be in the meeting next week? Are you going to be in the meeting tomorrow? And that's, you know, it just works itself out.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think we're going to probably, but not probably, we definitely are going to talk more about this quorum question when we get to the members of the body. Cause I think there are, are some factors related to that, that I think we should all just have some good, good discussion together about. So I will certainly let you talk about that again, if, if you feel like you want to add to that, but appreciate that, Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll hold my comments on the quorum until we get to that section. In terms of the staff, I agree with, with your thought, President Furman, that the, the council chief of staff should be in person, I think, to just as another support for alders that are in person for, for other things. I think that one makes sense. I, I'm not sure the city attorney being present is going to, would make any practical difference. But it sounds like that's what he's planning on doing at this point. So certainly not going to give objections to it. And I guess just the fact that it normally sit up, up on the dais next to the mayor. I mean, maybe just for that reason, it makes sense to have them in person. So either way, it sounds like that's not a controversial issue, at least for these first several meetings. I think the only thing I would add is it would be helpful for all of us to know which, which staff members will, will be in person or are in person versus online. I think that's just in general is going to be one of the things that will be helpful for all of us to, to know. You know, if, if you're on the Zoom meeting and you, you might see a list of some staff members, but then it's not necessarily clear who's also available, but in, in the room, if you're not in the room. So I think working towards some kind of an inventory so that at least members of the body know, whether it's staff or members of the body, who's in person and who's, who's virtual, I think would be helpful for all of us.
Yeah, I think we took that for granted in the past, being able to turn around and see them at their positions with their name tags. And then even virtually, we take it for granted, seeing their name there. Frankly, if we're experienced enough to know that person represents that department. But I do think there might be some room there to do some sort of inventory sheet of here's who's going to be there type thing. Thank you for that. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, actually that kind of segues to my question. I have kind of a clarifying question. When we, when we in person, we are there, present, we are seen, we are heard. When we're attending virtually, is it the practice to have individuals keep their camera on as much as they can? I, I only tend to turn my camera off if I, if I need to grab a quick bite to eat since I'm only very close, you know. But otherwise, is, is that, is that one of the requirements to be both seen and heard? Or can somebody attend a virtual meeting solely by, by audio alone? Just, just because that would affect the location of where a remote person might be, be joining, joining a meeting?
I will say for Zoom, we have asked members of the body to, to keep their camera on. So we know we have quorum and know they're actually there. We have done telephonic connections of alders in the past. And obviously you don't see them there. We don't ask them to continue to breathe into the mic. So we know they're there. So there certainly is some room to allow for that. But I do think it is very difficult for a chair to know if they still have quorum, if people are turning on and off their camera. I, I will admit, I do, I turn my camera off when I go to chew, because I don't want people to have to watch me chew. So I, I appreciate what you said. I'm, I'm there as well. But I do, you know, I think, you know, the, the default probably would be going forward, would, would be to ask people not to, you know, to leave their camera on as often as possible. And certainly if we're getting in some danger zones of worrying about quorum, which you'll hear at times the mayor say, reminder, you're supposed to leave your camera on. I'm getting a little scared about how many people I see. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, just wanted to add in there, Bill, for city staff. The general expectation is that they have their cameras off until they are participating in the, the discussion. So for, for members of the body generally on, you know, can go off for, for different reasons, but generally on for. you know, can go off for for different reasons, but generally on for staff, generally off. And then turning it on when you're when you're participating. The other thing is, as as an alder, when I've attended other meetings that I'm not a member of, at least myself, and I think a lot of folks generally will leave our cameras off if we're not actual members of that group. And then again, turn it on if we're sort of more actively participating in any given discussion.
Take you, Alder Foster. That's a good note to move to the next item, if I don't see anything else about city staff. Which would be members of the public. As we talked about earlier, meeting registration would continue to be online based. And it sounds like IT has that option for people filling out the paper and somebody would transcribe that online if that's what they're comfortable with when they're in person. The thought is that the public would be both in person and in virtual. We, you know, related to what Bill was just talking about was video. I think we need to have future discussions, which CCEC had in the past about allowing the public to turn on video. And then some policies surrounding the sharing of the material. For simplicity's sake, I'm hoping that we can stick to the policy of no video and material shared beforehand of the clerk or the relevant departments. There was a framework that we had talked about, or we, the Common Council Executive Committee talked about a while ago, and I'm more than happy to include that as an agenda item in the very near future for us to be talking about it again. And I assume that probably will be part of what Alder Bennett's about to tell me. Go ahead, Alder Bennett.
Put that on the agenda, you already know what I'm thinking. Yeah, because this is something I have worked with with staff and we talked about it last year, didn't really go that far. And I still believe that participants should be allowed to use video optionally. At this point, it's just kind of crazy to me that we don't allow optional video during online meetings, or I guess in this case, during a hybrid format. So if we aren't going to have that, I'm happy to have that discussion right now. But if we don't want to have that right now, I'm happy to, like, work through that. And I think we definitely need to talk about that in the future because it's still an issue that members of the public experience during online meetings is using camera. So whenever we want to have that discussion, it needs to be had.
I I agree with you, Alder Bennett. It is my preference not to have that tonight, but to put it on the agenda in the near future. I think there it's worth refreshing ourselves on what some of the concerns are with video and what some of the pros and cons are. But, you know, I think making sure that we have that discussion soon and making sure that we have, you know, actionable actions that come out of that and follow up, etc., I think is incredibly important. I will, I will note, and I'll go back to this for you, especially for you, Alder Bennett, because you weren't here. So excuse me while I go through these slides. Just so everybody knows, the way it would work at CCB 201 is that whatever's on Zoom will show up on the big screen behind the chair. And so we're thinking about, you know, the use of Zoom. It personally, it's a weird placement, but it's also a very weird room. So but whatever shows up on Zoom is going to show up behind the chair. And I think we we certainly want to at least take that into consideration when we're we're thinking about that later on. And again, this also gave Alder Bennett a quick moment to to see what the setup is in that room. I'll leave that up for a moment. And Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I I'm looking forward to the discussion around video for virtual members of the public as well. In terms of the meetings or the materials, I also would agree that the current state for members of the public that are attending virtual makes sense to to kind of keep the same, which is require them to submit ahead of time. I think perhaps this is another thing we can put on, maybe as a future discussion, or maybe our Chief of Staff or or other staff could start thinking about and working on actually getting, like, I don't know if that's even written down anywhere. And it seems like one of those things where sort of members of the public that might be more tuned in or just know how to navigate things better, you know, show up with that expectation or find out ways to get their stuff in. And it's it's not necessarily, we're not like publicizing that to average folks. So we might want to think about incorporating that in some broader kind of expectations or guidelines for participating in our meetings. And then also for in-person members of the public, you know, in the past, for all for in-person meetings, there there have been occasions, remember, the public came in with, you know, thirty copies of a handout, passed them out to to all elders. If that were to happen today, and there were elders that were attending virtually, that would, you know, leave that inaccessible for them. So I don't know if we also want to ask for staff to think about a workflow where we do actually require or suggest or encourage members of the public that would like to share some handout to also get that in to someone, to the clerk's office or to someone ahead of time so that it can be digitized and and shared with at least all members of the body ahead of.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Do we currently have any guidelines on that that are used to manage the content of the information shared? Asking for a friend, I mean, I just curious, like, is that is that something we look into, like, we have a topic at hand and we verify that the content is one, appropriate, or two, really informational for the rest of us?
I think I know the answer to that, but I'm gonna let either our Chief of Staff or Attorney Haas to see if they want to take a stab at that. Don't both volunteer at the same time.
I'm sorry, Alder, could you repeat the question?
Do you have any guidelines to measure or to examine the content of the items that are people asked to share?
Are you asking if there are any guidelines? I don't believe at this point there are, not that I know of.
I I mean, I don't know if that is something this body wants to examine also. I mean, there's some common sense things, but even maybe for the common sense things, we should probably have some guidelines on on that topic.
I I personally am not aware of any time I've heard. Karen, are you aware of any time that we've censored anything that somebody has tried to provide and or somebody has provided something that staff, you know, said was wildly inappropriate?
I'm not aware of anything, but the clerk's office and I think media team would be the two to also check with on that one.
Okay, so we we could get some follow up on that. But I think, you know, it sounds like we don't have a policy and we absolutely should have a policy that sort of, you know, that sort of, that that certainly leans towards allowing people to share stuff. But, you know, gives us the ability to say, you know, that's that's something that shouldn't be shared because it's either, you know, not safe for 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 work type stuff. Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
It actually just occurred to me that I've been sort of assuming that in the room. So what people who are watching from home are on Zoom, the participant is seeing what they're going to see from the room? I guess I just sort of assumed it's going to be very similar to what the City Channel feed used to be. That, like Joe or one of the other staff is going to be sort of in the room, being a technical director and choosing cameras to to display. So when a member of the public is testifying in the room, and if I'm at home being a virtual participant, what do I see in the Zoom window? If I'm watching for for that?
A big black box, if it's virtual. So it's, I will say their name, and that's just a black box, and it will say that they're talking. You know, the City Channel view is is one, one camera at a time or one Zoom box at a time. And as part of the technology upgrades, you know, from from the from City Channel's room, when we're in person, they'll be able to use either the in-person cameras or the Zoom view of what's going on and kind of merge up together, is my understanding.
Is that true? Is that going to be true for if I'm watching from home and, you know, it's a a council member who's in the room and they're speaking? Do I not see them? Do I see?
So just a black box or? When you say you, do you mean?
I mean, if 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 a member of if if a council member is participating virtually, so they're remote. And right now I see, you know, individual boxes of people because everyone's just sitting in front of their laptop and and watching that way. If I'm watching, if I am at home participating as an alder, what do I see for any action happening in the room?
That's a great question. I I I'm gonna let Sarah answer that since she has her hand up, and I assume she probably wants to make a point about something we had said previously.
Okay, so I'm actually going to have Tanya respond to Alder Paulson. And then I'm also going to just note that for the question about Alder Figaro Cole of what documentation is provided and what that process is, we should check with the city clerk, not IT on that one. City clerk is the keeper of that. Okay, Tanya, do you want to go ahead and speak?
Sure. So as far as what people attending virtually would see of the room, the way that we have it configured is that the media team feed, what people see on City Channel, will be going back out to Zoom as the room's camera. So when they focus in on an alder that's in person, that's what people will see as as the room. Does that make sense, Alder Paulson?
Tanya, can you, and can you specify what it means by room? Does it show up as just another box?
Yes, so the room itself will be as if it's another participant. So just like I'm in a little box, you're in a little box, the room would have a little box. And what we'll see as the little box for the room will be City Channel's feed.
And that includes everyone. So the mayor, when the mayor is speaking and then the camera will switch, the the director in the room will switch the camera to be the feed for the camera pointy at the dais, the the member of the public dais when someone's speaking and then bouncing back and forth between elders in the room as that discussion's happening there. So.
Yes, correct. There will be camera operators and a director in the control room that will be controlling the cameras just like we used to.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to to make sure on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Bennett.
To the point of like sharing materials, I was thinking, what if a participant came in person? And they were like, they wanted to share something on the screen, how does that work?
Yeah, that's 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 a problem that we're gonna have to figure out. And, you know, as even Alder Foster pointed out, you know, even if they show up with printouts, what are we going to do about that? So I think for now, we're going to be asking people to share it beforehand. I think we found out today that we probably are not communicating that as well as we could. And, you know, we will certainly work on this as an agenda item to make sure that we're clear about our policies, clear about our outline, clear about what people need to be doing. And obviously, with a with a a preference that we be as flexible as possible while allowing everybody to see whatever we're talking about.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thank you. Alder Heck.
Thank you. I realize we're not talking about sharing material beforehand yet. But I did want to mention that when we do have that discussion, that we try to include not only the clerk's office, but some of those relevant departments. Because if we're going to promote that, which I don't think is a bad thing, we need to make sure that we understand that they can handle that and how it will be handled. But we're not having that discussion yet. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck, Alder Figaro Cole.
It's a question that I have been meaning to ask, like, for a while, and I just never never put too much emphasis on it. But we have an occasion of people share from the from the floor, from the from us, you know, from the body at sharing information. What is the process for that today? So I remember in an occasion, someone shares something and then somebody else wanted to share something and we had to vote to make it fair. So what what is the process for an alder to share to share something? Is there something in place for that?
I'm not aware of any processes in place. I think we've dealt with that on a case by case basis. And I do recall the incident where somebody wanted to show, you know, a long video at the council meeting. One of our colleagues did, and and we voted on that. I think I think we need to make rules around that because there are rules do not exist. Is that something that, you know, an alder just gets permission to share their screen and they get to share things? Or is that, you know, something that, you know, what are the guidelines there? You know, or do we, you know, sort of like a video example, you know, can they can they show a ten minute video? Do we have to sit there and watch a ten minute video? You know, or, you know, how does that all work? I I think we're gonna have some interesting discussions around that because if elders want to make points about stuff, we may we may want to be bugging Bill, our new alder, to help produce really fancy videos to talk about stuff during our discussion times. We probably don't want to go there, but we we certainly should talk about some parameters and and, you know, policies around that. And we will, we'll have that as a future agenda item.
Thank you.
All right. So believe it or not, we're about to now move on to the the slide where I expect to have the most discussion, which is, which is us, members of the body, participating in a hybrid meeting. Some of the things for us to consider and talk about, as we're talking about this particular group of participants, is that, you know, that we are trying to focus on the first meeting in our policy discussions. And I think there should be a goal of having as many elders as possible. I think we should be looking at what our quorum, is there some sort of quorum number in person? If we only have two elders that want to be in person, does that mean, you know, we, you know, that the two elders sit there with the mayor? I I I personally think that's, and I've heard feedback, that that's probably not a great, great scenario for the body and for the chair, etc. So let's talk about, we can talk about some quorum numbers. I know we started that discussion. Do we want reasons and justifications for elders not to be in person? And what what is that? Is that, you know, a matter of, you know, I remember Alder Bennett participating in a meeting because she had the flu. And I was grateful that she was able to participate in that meeting and not get everybody else sick, but still be a member of the body. Is it, you know, look, today just didn't work out and I want to be there, be be in person or virtual? I think we should have some discussions about the timing related to virtual first in person. Would that be published on the agenda? How would the chair know what to expect? Is that I get stuck in traffic and I just want to turn my car around and participate virtually? Stuff like that, how the queue will work? The use of Zoom in person by members of the body, what are some of the issues with that? So there's a lot of things there, and we've kind of methodically in our last slides gone through each of those things, kind of one by one. I'm open how everybody wants to deal with this. It's probably not helpful if you just give me your opinion about everything on the screen and we keep going around. So whoever speaks first will set whatever we talk about first. And then we'll go from there. And there's certainly more that I think people could bring up related to this with questions and our ideas. But let's pick something on this list and start with it, Alder Foster.
All right, I'm gonna try and just take one thing so we can do it. Quorum, I would say, I I get and agree that it would feel weird and a little silly if there are three or four members of the body in person and everyone else is virtual. On the other hand, if that's the case, I mean, I don't know why the council's gonna vote to go back or start doing hybrid if a majority of elders aren't even wanting to or willing to be there. I I worry a little bit about sending, setting a different quorum or or converting our current quorum to be an in-person quorum because the reality is then if, for whatever reason, if we fall one below that, then and we've set a new rule, that means we no longer have quorum. And do we really want to set ourselves up to say, okay, well, now we do have five people on video or six people, and there are a couple of absences and, you know, nine people in person. But now we have to stop our meeting and not do our business. So I my inclination would be perhaps instead we could set a sort of a a desire for, you know, encourage folks that as we, especially in the beginning, as we test this out, that in general, anyone who can attend in person should and but not really set like hard rules and evaluate how it's going rather than creating a new a new quorum and just leave the the quorum what it is today. That would be both a combination of in-person or virtual would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Paulson. Interviewed it.
There we go. Zoom is not the company preference either, so I'm getting better at Zoom. If there was teams, I would have got that right. So I also don't think that we should switch to a specific in-person quorum, but I think that we should be doing our best to try to make sure that there is a quorum in the room. I think if there is a rule that we do have to change, it's that, you know, the quorum is you know, the other failure scenario is what happens if the Zoom meeting is going, but we lose the chair? We lose the room from Zoom, but everyone else is still on it, right? Then we've, I think we have to kind of, we now have to make a question of 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 where is quorum determined? And from whose, from whose chair is the quorum counted for? So I think we want to make sure that we wouldn't want to have an in-person quorum minimum, but we want to make sure that if you know, that the the quorum is always counted so long as the chair can can reach the right number of people. So even if the number in the room falls down, so long as you can still get to fourteen somehow elsewhere. So it's a slight, slight minor change that probably doesn't matter. One thing I'd like to talk about, which is kind of related with sets the tone for other things and we can table this and come back to it later, but is just more of a question of are we thinking that we always want to go back and will never have an only virtual meeting? And what we might set as sort of policy or how we think about that? Where hybrid is, I think being in person is gonna be useful and beneficial for the body. But I don't think we need to say that every meeting here on out might be hybrid. We may want to be, we might want to say that in, some meetings are just gonna be virtual. Maybe it's only for emergencies, right? There's a snowstorm and so rather than making everyone shut down to CCB, we're gonna do that online. But I think there may be some other times where it's like, you know, it's just, this doesn't look like it's gonna be a very long meeting, so let's just do it virtually. Or this does look like it's gonna be a long meeting, so let's just do it all virtually. So we wrap up our friends already at home. And I don't want to switch away from the quorum discussion, but I just want to put that out there as a discussion I think we should have because it does, I think, inform and change a little bit of how we think about all the other policies. If there will be times where we're not committing to every single meeting here on out being hybrid, but it may still be a little bit of virtual.
Yeah, we're definitely, thank you. We're definitely trying to separate the discussion of, you know, I've heard suggestions from people that maybe we do every other meeting and, you know, hybrid and some virtual. I think I want to, we want to try to disconnect that or not have those discussions together as part of this and very much focus on if we're hybrid, what does this look like? I will say that our ordinance does have some requirements on a meeting location, one of which is if there is a snowstorm, we can declare a virtual meeting. If it was supposed to be hybrid or in-person and there are requirements about changing location, I will send you info on that, so you have that as an FYI. But essentially, we decide at the meeting before, we can say the next meeting is virtual or it has to be two meetings before decide if it's gonna be virtual to an in-person location or slash hybrid location. So there is some parameters there where we can't just, you know, from the drop of a hat, say, hey, we're doing this instead. And we have to be very intentional about it. But I do think as a body, we should certainly have longer discussions about, you know, does it make sense for every meeting to be hybrid? Or do we want to have, you know, certain meetings in a given month, you know, be just virtual? And then we'll make sure we have those discussions once we figure out what the hybrid policies look like. Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
So I'm speaking on this, like, from my perspective is I'm on the library board and we voted last fall or winter, sometime, sometime in that area, to go back in person and we've had in-person hybrid meetings. I believe that if alders, like, if they don't feel comfortable going back in person right now, then they don't have to. But on the library board specifically, there was one member of the body that just didn't feel comfortable going back in person yet because they, I think they have a family member that is high risk of kind of get COVID. And they've been joining virtually and the way that it works is like they have this like tele commuter thing. It's like a voice box. I don't know how to explain it. Yeah, it's like a, it's kind of like a phone audio speaker thing. So I can see a situation where if, for example, in the, in the, in the meeting, Zoom cuts out, then we could switch alders to that, to that tele speaker thing. That way we still have quorum. And I do think that quorum can certainly be met by having alders in person or online. And I think that if we have a, if we use that, you know, Zoom meeting and then alternate scenario, maybe Sarah knows more about how that exactly works with the tele speaker thingy. Can speak more to that. But I think if we have both options there, then I wouldn't worry too much about quorum issues. So, sorry.
Sorry, Alder Bennett, do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I'll have to check with what the library is doing. They might just be using one of the teleconferencing phones and doing the meeting that way and having them participate. That would add incredibly, another whole layer to the meetings that I just don't think, I think, yes, technically it's possible. Logistically, I don't know if that would actually be something that you would want to try to do. But if that is something that you would want us to look at, we certainly could do it. But I don't think it would be done in time for the 7/12 hybrid meeting. We have to focus in on the things that we need to get done for those meetings.
Okay, sorry. I was thinking maybe that could be like just a fail-safe.
Yeah.
Another thing for hybrid meetings, for council members specifically, in the library board, we have to let them know like two days in advance if we're going to be joining in a hybrid or not. And I think that's something that should be a standard for council. Like you have to let them know by Friday whether or not you want to join in person or online or something like that for council members.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I will definitely want to talk a little bit more about that. Appreciate the feedback, I think. I want to just note for, for the minutes and also catch her up to speed very quickly. Alder Conklin has joined us from another committee meeting, so welcome. Alder, you have joined at a good time because we're talking about one of the many components of hybrid. There's certainly a lot of discussion that you missed about some of the other components. But we are, and we will be continuing that discussion under our next CCC. But we were just talking about some of the different things to think about about alders and a hybrid format. And so right now, we're actually at the first thing on this screen, or at least the first big thing on the screen, which is quorum of an in-person meeting. Should we have a level set that if we can't get X amount of alders to be in person, that we should just be virtual? And then there are some other questions that you can see that we'll start hitting on. I have some thoughts and comments about what Alder Bennett said, but do want to give Alder Heck, who has his hand up, an opportunity to speak. So Alder Heck.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my voice to the fact that I thought 50% plus one is likely not necessary. But I'm also going to bleed into the next bullet, reasons, justifications for alders not to be in person. I feel pretty strongly that we don't want to put ourselves in a position of deciding whether someone's reason is appropriate or not. I think we have to do our best to set expectations and despite my inclination, not be judgy. Thanks.
You're no fun, Alder Heck, but I actually do want to talk about that as well in a moment. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Going back to the quorum question, I think, President Furman, you mentioned, if, you know, if we sort of dip below a certain threshold, perhaps we should do virtual instead of hybrid. I mean, I think in reality, if we knew, I mean, we would need to know at least a month or a meeting in advance to do that. And I expect where this would become an issue is if something changes and now we don't have that. So I think the actual, if we did set a different quorum, the reality would be we would have to stop a meeting or not hold a meeting if we set a new quorum rule that was not met. Because now we had five alders available virtually and only 10 in the room. Do we, would we really want to prefer to not hold that meeting rather than proceed with the meeting? And so I think that that's just for me why I don't think we should go there and set a new standard unless we really believe that it would be better to cancel the meeting and not hold the meeting than to proceed with even a, even an arrangement of virtual alders that is maybe not preferable or maybe not ideal.
Appreciate that very much, Alder Foster. I think, you know, what we may want to be considering, especially related to the timing, is whether or not we do before that, you know, meeting before having staff, you know, do a quick core check on, hey, how many people are actually gonna be able to be in person? And then maybe we have that discussion on, we're setting the meeting location on, you know what? FYI, that meeting is only gonna have like four alders. Does anybody care whether or not we continue doing that in person or hybrid? But not actually have like a hard rule? Because if we have a hard rule, it could be very problematic. I think, I think I do want to echo what Alder Heck said, is it is not our place to be judgmental. Alders don't have, you know, we've talked about this. There is, the only accountability alders have is to their, the people that vote for them. So there is no way to, you know, necessarily punish an alder for, you know, not coming to a meeting or, you know, deciding that they're gonna stay home. But I do, I do like the idea of setting expectations. So at least as a body, we have some sort of consensus to think about. I think because we're talking about our first meeting, I think it's worth noting. And, you know, I've had discussions with many alders about this. There's a lot of COVID still going around. And, you know, when we're talking about hybrid, we're talking about what the future of the council is. But we're also, we need to recognize what our current reality is, which is COVID is still spreading throughout our community. The good news is people aren't going to the hospital nearly as much as they used to. But the bad news is it's still pretty nasty. And so I think when we're thinking about this, you know, at least keep in mind at our first meeting, you know, our goal might be to have, you know, 20 alders there. But because of people's different risk tolerances, as well as possibly having COVID or people in their family having COVID, we certainly are gonna need to recognize that and be flexible about that. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Alder Bennett. And I think that does go into the, kind of the reason justification thing. If people have thoughts about that or thoughts about anything I said, you know, please. Alder Bennett.
Yeah, to that point, I'm curious to know like how far in advance staff would need to know if we're joining online? And for example, like when I had the flu, it sucked. But maybe not as bad as COVID, but it still sucked. Anyways, I had caught it like the day before. It got really bad the day before the meeting. So what if like, on the day, on the day of the meeting, I'm like, I can't come? Is that acceptable for hybrid?
I think collectively-
Person, I can come online.
I think collectively as a group, we need to figure that out and set expectations. I think, you know, it's the, you know, there's gonna be no hard rule, but I think the chair, the chair can't be guessing at the beginning of the meeting what's going on. And, you know, I would think that we'd want to at least have some sort of structure where there is, you know, a little bit of, you know, Keith is having a bad hair day and he decides he wants to stay home. I don't know if that's necessarily the best reason for Keith to be staying home. That said, you know, Patrick said he wouldn't judge me if I did that. So, but I think, you know, as a council, I think it's probably incumbent on us to just set expectations for ourselves and our colleagues and try to, try to stick to that without being too judgy. Whatever we decide with these particular things, you know, about the justification and the timing, it's going to be very hard to enforce. But I think the thing that we need to hopefully recognize collectively as a body, having expectations there are going to be important. Because, you know, we rely on each other to be present and participate. And so, you know, I think when it comes to, you know, reasons and justifications and timing, you know, let's put in a framework where we're not being judgy, but we are, you know, setting fair, fair expectations. I think, you know, the idea of you waking up even the morning of a council meeting and, you know, high fever, coughing, you know, whatever it is. I mean, that's, that's very good justification for saying, I ain't gonna expose other people to that, but I, but I do want to continue to do my job. And I think the fact that technology lets you do that, that's fantastic. So this is gonna be a hard thing for us to figure out what, how we set that expectation. But I, but I think collectively as a body, I'm hoping we can, we can set some of that.
Yeah. So I guess on the note of expectation, I'm curious to hear from other alders what they think, like those expectations should be. Because on one side, I could see, like, I expect, I can speak for myself. I expect for myself to show up to all council meetings. And if they're gonna be in person, I expect to show up in person unless something happens. So I don't know if that could be like a universal thing, like we expect alders to show up in person. Unless there is, you know, a reason why they don't want to be, or unless they want to show up virtually. But I don't know how we would even go about setting such an expectation like that where it kind of shows, it kind of gives this impression that like, we want you to be in person and it puts this onus on like alders to set aside their thoughts about wanting to show up online or virtually because they don't feel comfortable being in person or for whatever reason they might not, might have for wanting to be virtual still. And like, how many meetings can people come virtually if we go in person? Is there an expectation that like, you shouldn't, you should come to all meetings except for one or two if you need to come online? Or any in-all meetings that you don't want to come in person, you can come in, you know? So that's what I'm wondering.
Struggling now, me myself, sorry about that. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Figaro Cole.
I mean, I think we are going on circles on this one. I personally, again, this is a job that we are somewhat hired to do. But like any other job, you're expected to do your best at, when it comes to your, to your attendance. So for example, here, there, I mean, I just got, I just took COVID positive yesterday. I don't have to be at this meeting if I don't want to. Nobody's gonna force me to be at this meeting. That's a decision that I make on my own. And really the expectation for all of us and for our, and to set a good, in fact, to set a good example, I shouldn't have been at this meeting. Jael, I'm just taking your words right now. I should be taking care of myself because that's the most important thing that we should be doing, taking care of ourselves and passing that, reflecting that into the public, that we need to take better care of our mental health and our health in general. So this thing about what is the expectation for us to come, to come to a meeting, to make it easy for us to come to a meeting when we're sick because we have an online version, is a little bit, I mean, we shouldn't even be discussing that because it should be no-brainer. We're sick, we should be just recovering somewhere and that should be excuse enough for it. But I just wanted to, I do want to touch on the fact that we, we are doing these, these changes due to COVID and we are, we need to continue to talk about the reality of COVID. But I really want to challenge us to talk about the reality of past COVID. I mean, what we, we've been, we just had a, an election where we put in the ballot the discussion about having a full-time council versus having a paid council versus who are the people that we want to target to serve the city? Who are the people that had the privilege to do two jobs or not have a job at all? This is one way to allow people that have extra barriers to be able to participate on the city business. So regardless of COVID, regardless if you're, if you're, if you want to, if you're a workaholic, if you are sick and you want to come and to the meetings regardless of your status when it comes to your health, this, to me, the most important, the most important driver of moving or having the option of hybrid is for people that perhaps have small children at home and they don't have their care readily available. Or people who are taking care of their parents and there, it's difficult for them to be them home alone where they go to a meeting for six, eight, 10 hours during the week. So having the hybrid version to me is way past COVID. I mean, so this, this point of trying to determine some rigid guideline on how often you come in person or not, I think is a moot point. Having said that, I think at the beginning of this trial, you know, as we, as we tried the technology and the combination of the two methods, we need to put our best effort to be in person and to have people that are not in person so we can test the technology to see how it works. So I think at the beginning, we should definitely commit to it and have some rules about that commitment. But soon after, our goal should be to make it easier for people that want to serve as alders to do their job and to be present and to be part of the discussion. That's how I'm seeing this solution in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thanks. I was trying not to belabor the points, but I think just in general, we should move past this bullet point. And I don't think we should put in anything like this. We can always, if we start to see issues and it seems like something, you know, someone's abusing of it or whatever, we can always look to- you know, someone's abusing of it or whatever, we can always look to add, uh, different guidelines later. But I think in the beginning, I think we just trust that we're all going to try and, and make the thing work. I think instead focusing on the next bullet point, which is really around kind of visibility of notification of what people's plans are and really stressing that, um, all of that should, should happen with as much advanced notice as possible. So I think, you know, really like today, the expectation is that everyone's going to be present. And if you're not going to be at a meeting, you need to let staff know ideally as soon as possible, hey, I'm, I won't be in attendance at this meeting. I think we could do something very similar. Um, I, I'd even be fine saying that the standard expectation is that everyone's going to be in person. So we just have, uh, you know, something filled out. And but if an older wants to say, you know what, actually, no, I'm going to be, I'm going to plan on doing virtual for every meeting, we could just update that one time, have it all there. Um, and then, yeah, it might, it might be an hour or two hours before the meeting. When I got COVID, it was a council day and I didn't, I didn't even start feeling bad. It was like two hours before the council meeting. And that would have been a great time for me to say, you know what, I don't think I should go in tonight, but I still want to participate. So I, I just don't think we should have any rules around it. But just really focus on the expectation that we're all, um, giving notification of what our plans are. Trying to do that as early as possible and trying to limit any last minute changes unless it's, unless it's needed.
Thank you, Alder Foster. I do want to note, um, the time, obviously we don't have a council meeting to go to next, um, which is good because, um, this has certainly taken a lot of energy to talk about, but this is a good discussion. I do think that probably the timing thing, um, I'm thinking may be a good stop point after we, we continue to go around and talk about that and move on to, we have two more agenda items and we do have, uh, our, our director of HR here to talk about that and try to start some discussion there. So, obviously this isn't our last discussion and I think we've had a really fantastic discussion. I've got a few people in the queue that, um, we still have to hear from, but I'm thinking the timing for the decisions related to in-person versus virtual, um, probably would be a good stopping point. Um, Alder Paulson, go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, kind of follow up on, uh, Alder Bennett made a point that, uh, she was interested in what, what folks were thinking and then, and maybe this is, but my own preference is to always be there in person. And, and, uh, unless I'm sick and unless I'm too sick to feel like I could participate, I'm going to like, you know, call it an evening and spend it on my couch and not, not join in. The one place where I, uh, expect to be maybe a little different is, um, on very late night meetings. Things that I expect to go very long, um, I would prefer to do the more of those virtually, uh, just because I'm not super comfortable driving home at four in the morning. I'm not sure I can stay awake, uh, on the drive home. And so there's, there are a couple of meetings that I don't have any like physical impairments like that would prevent me from getting there. I just am not sure. I want to stay super, super late. Um, and, and I would like that to, um, I know Alder Heck is not going to be judgy, but, um, but I think that's, uh, I think that's a fair, uh, something that, that an older should be able to say that, like, you know, this is going to go so long that, the additional burden of the commute is, is, um, worth taking into account. And I think those late nights, uh, to get into sort of the ability of people to do it, it's a lot easier, uh, to do this job if you can, close the laptop lid and, and walk out of your, uh, office and be home rather than everything else. So, just wanted to add that to the mix.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Alder. Sarah, go ahead.
Thanks, Alder Furman. Um, I, I did want to note that, um, I, uh, there will be, it's not actually a technical issue from switching from a hybrid to a virtual, but an actual staffing issue that will be of concern to us. So, um, it takes more full-time staff to do a virtual meeting than it does for a hybrid meeting. And, um, our media team staff, they get scheduled out almost two weeks in advance. And so, um, I have to follow along very carefully with their association rules on how that works. And so we do need to take that into consideration when we're having these conversations.
Thank you, Alder Bennett.
Well, I mean, to that point, Sarah, I'm wondering like how far in advance the staff need to know.
That's a great question. When I asked them, um, in our, um, messaging, they said two weeks.
And, and so to be specific, that's whether or not we're going to be virtual or in person. And so, uh, that's, that's what, that's how our ordinance is also set up. That, so that, that helps. Um, that's, that's not the individual members. That's actual, you know, the actual meeting itself. And we, we, we've certainly though, um, hopefully we'll have, have, uh, if, if there is that rare, we're going to have a, a terrible snowstorm and we're deciding to go virtual. Hopefully we can have that level of flexibility rather than cancel the meeting like we have in the past, but, um, have to figure that out. Go ahead, Alder Bennett, sorry.
I'm so sorry. Um, I, I shouldn't have cut you off. Um, I'm wondering like for, for individuals, like members of the body, how long, how long in advance, like would staff need to know, like would, would it be preferable that you knew if, 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 if an individual member of the body wanted to join hybrid? Like, or virtually to a hybrid meeting, like by Friday, or like, would it help to know in advance who is coming in hybrid if there's not? And like, by what time would you need to know?
So for, for us, the biggest issue is it doesn't matter if, um, an individual makes that decision, but if you make the decision as an entire body to go virtual from hybrid or in person, that's where the impact is. And I believe that their contracts say that they have to have three days notice. And that they don't have to accept it if it's, if it's, um, you know, one day or an hour before. I, I will say that the, the media team staff is a very flexible and very, um, willing to work with, uh, with us, but if they don't want to do it, they don't have to and they cannot get penalized for that. Nor would I penalize them.
That makes sense. Um, I guess I'm, I'm thinking for the chair, I'm just going to be someone we do in the library board. I, I, I do feel like, I don't know if this is like emotion or like something, but we should set the expectation that like all there should let the chair and staff know by like Friday before the meeting, if they're going to be coming online or in person, or, or, or more like if they're going to be coming online to a hybrid meeting. So that the chair knows what the hell is going on beforehand. And I also think, I, and I'm, I apologize for like returning to a topic that we've already let go in terms of staff, but it has been a problem that we've seen with others taking things off of the agenda last minute and not having the appropriate staff there. And I think that should be another expectation that if we're going to be having hybrid meetings, you need to be letting people know if they're going to be needed or not to show up to the meeting.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Foster.
President Furman, I just wanted to address one of the, uh, subpoints on this timing, uh, slide that says, will it be published on agenda, uh, in terms of who's, you know, in person or virtual? I, I think in practice, it's more likely that that's, we're going to get out of sync. I, I think it's, it seems likely that virtual attendance may tend to be more, you know, something that happens after an agenda is published. And I don't think we're going to want to amend the agenda for something like that. So I, my recommendation would probably be to not put that on the agenda, but I think it is something, again, we should, the, the chair for sure, you know, and council staff should know as soon as possible, we should always have kind of a running expectation of who, who is where with flexibility to update it as needed. And I think it should be, um, it should be included in the minutes of the meeting. If someone is virtual or, uh, or in person, but I don't think we need to, uh, put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Alder Foster. So I, I think at this point, I, um, I, I'd like to say, I mean, I, we, we've gotten a lot of, uh, good discussion. We're going to continue this discussion at our next meeting, especially hit the points that we didn't hit on the slide. Um, I will prepare for our next meeting, um, a summary of what we've talked about and see if we can, um, start putting together some pieces, um, for our policy. I think, um, I think we do have a lot of strong consensus in what we have talked about this evening. So I don't think that's going to be too difficult. And so, uh, well, I, I will have that put together for our next meeting and we continue talking about some of the other points on that slide and hopefully have some of our other colleagues join us, um, and give their feedback, um, between now and then and at that meeting. But I do thank everybody very much for participating in this discussion tonight. I, um, uh, for me, this was very overdue. It was just hearing from different people and different points of view. And, uh, I certainly learned a lot from it. So, so thank you, everybody. So, uh, we're going to move on to agenda item seven, one, seven, nine, nine, which is the chief of staff onboarding. We have a recent ordinance change, um, that the council passed that makes, um, it very clear, um, how our, um, council office is set up and how that interacts with, um, C C E C. And so, um, this is really kind of a, a start of taking advantage of that. Going forward, um, our brand new chief of staff, um, does report to the common council executive committee. Doesn't report to the president, doesn't report to, um, you know, anybody else but this committee as a whole. That doesn't mean that, um, um, Alder Heck can call up and tell her to do something on behalf of C C E C. I'm going to pick on Alder Heck. Um, but, uh, it, it means that as a body, um, we're going to work with Karen, um, to help, um, help her do her job well. Um, she, uh, we're going to expect her to give us, us feedback on things that are, and information on what's going on in the office. Um, as well as, um, give her, um, feedback on things that we, we like, because I think it's always good to give people feedback, uh, things that are working well. And then, um, things that, that we, we want to see differently. And so as part of this process, um, um, we need to talk about her onboarding. I know it's a weird thing to talk about when she's been in the position for a while and she obviously comes from the department. But we did, I did invite Harper here this evening, um, to talk a little about, um, the, the onboarding, um, template, um, that was sent out earlier. Um, and to see if we can get some feedback, um, and, and make it clear that we're not making decisions here necessarily today. But we certainly can provide some guidance. Um, and this won't be the last time we discuss this. I'm expect this to continue to be an interactive, uh, subject, um, for this body. Because I know we all very much want, um, our chief of staff to succeed. So Harper, with that in mind, would you like me to share the screen? Um, would you like to talk about, um, the onboarding process and some of, uh, possible areas that this body can help you with tonight?
Sure, that'd be fantastic. Um, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invitation. Again, it sounds like Karen has been doing quite a bit of this work for a while now, but I, I'm, I'm happy that you all are having this discussion. A little late, but still good, um, in regards to expectations that you'll have with this position. Uh, when I came into the meeting, it sounded like, um, there are discussions in regards to, we all have guests, if, if, if we would be able to have access to screen sharing. And was that a no?
In this committee meeting, uh, we started, we're talking about council meetings. In this committee meeting, um, you certainly can share your screen. We can have staff give you the access. I was going to share, but I'm more than happy and, and.
You got it. There are a couple of other things that I would like to share.
Why, why don't you take, why don't, why don't you take over? That way you could make sure you drive and I have, that's way easier for me to be honest. So, um, Joe, are you able to give Harper the ability to? There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Um, it, it does help. So in regards to the onboarding process for Karen, um, for the most part, what we're looking to do, the onboarding plan is for new hires and, and folks when they go through promotional opportunities. Key components, we want to make sure that they're connecting with internal and external stakeholders. Key city processes and learning some of the proper policies and procedures to help them. We want to just make sure that folks are being set up for success. So Karen's position is a little unique. Um, a lot of this has already been going on as far as meeting with the C C E C. Usually I would want to have this conversation offline, um, more intimate conversation with maybe council leadership. But if this is the form that we have, this is the form that we have. Um, because I think an important component of this is actually getting some feedback from Karen, especially seeing as how Karen is probably the most familiar, um, with this role. I, I believe, um, Alder Furman, you did share that class back for, for Karen as well. And the reason I, I mentioned that is that everything for the most part should be pretty much centered around that class specification, that position description in regards to some of those expectations. So as far as like city policies, we definitely want to get Karen involved, um, so that she can support her staff. Um, in regards to like players, different stakeholders that she should have relationships, build relationships with. I think she probably know, I, I would assume that you know, most folks by now. But I think what we want to try to do is align your expectations in regards to your priorities, um, make sure that Karen is aware of those. So I'll briefly kind of go through this. Um, I, I, it has already been brought to my attention that you all, um, that there has been suggestions at the clerk's office, um, definitely. But C C C meeting, um, go over expectations related to council needs and concerns, um, expectations for communication. I think this might be one of the, the, the most important factors for Karen's success in regards to how she's communicating. Um, I, I think different folks have different expectations of this position. I think it's really important that you all are starting off early with some of those conversations. Um, the previous council chief of staff, um, after being in a position for a couple of years, um, I, I would use the word disappointing. It was disappointing to hear different folks question what he was doing because I think other folks had, you know, a great relationship and they're well aware in regards to some of the things that he was providing. So we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So that communication is going to be huge. Um, the budget process, um, capital operating budget, I think you all have different initiatives, um, different priorities. It'll be good to make sure that she's familiar with Dave Schmiedeke, the city's finance director, um, Kristen Coy, um, the budget manager. Um, I believe she probably already has a pretty good relationship with them already. Mike Haas, um, she talks to him all the time. Again, the mayor's office, um, I, I can definitely see the need for, for Karen to have regular continuous communication at the very least with the mayor's chief of staff, Mary Batari. Um, we, uh, we talk about racial equity, social justice. Make sure that there's a connection with civil rights. Um, some of that communication is already happening. You'll see quite a bit, um, in regards to human resources. Um, not that I think human resources is the most important agency, but I do have my biases like everybody else. Um, but you know, especially right now with some of the staffing needs, um, make sure that she's communicating with folks so she can get some, some support. Um, it's a smaller office, but there still could be some issues in regards to, um, personnel, performance management. So just making sure she's touching, you know, base with folks, making sure that folks understand and that she's in this new role and that she may have some, some new needs. Or development, um, E A P. We have economic development, um, some housing initiatives, sustainability initiatives, public works. Um, I think most folks are, are, are aware that Kathy Cryin is their interim engineering manager. Charlie Rowmines is recently, I believe, uh, resolution did go through earlier this month. He's a public works team lead. It'll probably be good to stay familiar with what's going on. There are a lot of discussions that Karen has been regularly attending those meetings. She's been doing that for at least the past year, I believe. So that's good. Uh, so here we are right now. So again, for the most part, I think she's familiar with a lot of our processes. It's really just making sure she's connecting with folks and building those relationships and, and making sure she's getting the information that you all are looking for and that she's sharing that information appropriately. So that's pretty much the onboarding plan for right now. Um, there's some other things that I, some suggestions that I'll probably have. But again, I think this is a good, you know, starting point, um, and we can just start building from there.
Thank you for that, Harper, very much. I, I, I do want to note, I mean, you know, um, one that, um, you know, I think luckily Karen is pretty comfortable with this body and the, and, and elders, but certainly will make it clear to all, all elders that if there are situations where Karen is uncomfortable talking about something here, I will be working with her in H R. To make sure that she has some, somewhere comfortable to talk about things. Um, I don't want her to, you know, ever be in a position where, um, you know, she, uh, doesn't feel like she has somewhere to go. So, um, you know, Har, Harper and I will certainly make, make sure that, that, that room is available. But I do think and appreciate Harper bringing up our preview, uh, previous, um, experience, um, which I do think, um, I, I, I put a lot of blame on, on the common council executive committee, as well as just the council in general for, for not doing a better job of having just good discussions with our previous chief of staff. And I think, uh, the expectation that that up being, um, just, just, uh, misaligned on both sides. And so this is why, why we're going to have, uh, this is why we changed the ordinance. This is why we're going to have more discussions here. So people understand what's going on and, and there's, and things don't become a problem, um, um, you know, because people are thinking or, or, or assuming different things. Um, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was, my, my initial thoughts for this and thanks for sharing it, Harper. I, I think it's, there's, um, kind of a good outline, um, you know, and it's especially in the, the top section. I was curious what, um, if Karen would feel comfortable working on a draft plan, kind of based off of this sort of document as a starting point and, and starting to fill in some of those things, um, and then bring that back to us and share, kind of, you know, here's what I'm thinking for an onboarding plan, review it with C C E C, get any feedback. Um, I guess my, my question would be to her if she feels comfortable. Um, kind of taking the initiative. I guess my my question would be to her if she feels comfortable kind of taking the initiative on that.
Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I can put together the things I've been doing and the things that I've already, I've signed up for a number of supervisor trainings. For example, management trainings, attending a lot of, you know, citywide meetings. And I'll catch you, I can catch you all up on on what I've been doing to onboard myself. And then there's some things that I, you know, I have on the list. And so I'm happy to catch you up on on that as well. It's a bit of a interesting position, considering I don't, I I, we've been without a Chief of Staff for so long. And then also being a, in, you know, having been internal, things are a little less crisp in terms of this stopped and this starts, right? So I am happy to update you, though, on what I've done and what I plan to continue doing.
Well, and, you know, the part of why I'm I'm thinking it would be worth doing, Karen, is not not even so much just for you to, you know, share it with us, although that, I mean, I think it's helpful. And, you know, perhaps somebody's got some idea that would be helpful for you to hear as well. But also specifically, if there are areas that, you know, you need support in or that you, you know, I think there there could be a lot of value in just highlighting, hey, here's something I'm thinking about, here's a direction I want to go. Kind of getting that confirmation from C C C and or, you know, oh, great, yeah, well, let's think about doing a budget amendment or whatever, whatever the thing is. I guess just, I would like you to see it as an opportunity also to get, to be supported and to make sure you're, you know, you you feel like you're getting that from this body. So so I guess that's one thing. So it sounds like you're willing to do that would be great. A second thing would be, I actually think we should consider having a standing agenda item on our C C E C meetings that is essentially update from Chief of Staff or check in with Chief of Staff. You know, there might be some times when that's very brief and and we don't go through it. But I think, I think that would be a much better place than not having enough of those check-ins. So that would be another suggestion I have.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Sorry, I I cut out for a second, so I'm sorry. So this is already mentioned. But I was wondering if there is any room for plan for like training or et cetera, like a training program? Or if that's something you're seeking, Karen, in this plan?
Karen, go go ahead.
Everybody cut out and I I don't know.
The the question was, any anything about a training plan that you you'd want to share, if you thought about that? I think that hopefully reflects what Alder was asking.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. I do think that that, I would love to talk about that topic. Absolutely. I have some thoughts. I'd like to get your thoughts. Yeah.
Like I was thinking something along, I don't know, maybe leadership or management training could help. And I don't, I don't know if we have the budget to pay for that or whatever, but I'd love to hear your thoughts too.
Yeah, so Karen, if that's something, you know, and, you know, if people have suggestions, you know, we we can certainly talk through that. I, you know, I think based on my discussions with Karen, Karen feels very strongly in office training. So not just, not just for herself, but just, you know, professional development is, seems like that's something incredibly important, Karen. And I think what you'll hear from C C E C is that we are supportive of that as well, both for you and the entire office. So certainly keep us in the loop on that and we'll have discussions about that. I, one of the things that I don't think we've talked about enough, that's that's important to note about updates. Our Common Council Office right now is operating on, is is not enough capacity. We have two, we have three unfilled positions. So we're supposed to be at five people. We are only at two people. We were used to at least being at three. And so there there's a a lot of things that Debbie and Karen are doing right now. And I do think at C C E C, as part of those updates, we really should be focused on, you know, this onboarding. You know, the next item, which I'm not sure we're gonna talk too much about, but also just, you know, how how things are going. But and then just office capacity, I want people to understand what's going on there. And and just be clear, because I think at times we're gonna have to make decisions, because staff can't do it all, especially with with such little, you know, amount of people in the office, unfortunately. Alder Figaro, call.
That's a great point, and I think it's a point that needs to be brought to the louder, to the larger audience. People need to, needs to understand the the capacity constraints we're having right now. I mean, I know we have had capacity constraints since we started a year ago, but we should, I think it is a a point of reset and and it's appropriate to bring to the council an update on where we are on that capacity, to make sure that people are respectful of other people's times. I mean, like, for example, I have a meeting coming up and I just met with the people I have in the meeting and it, just making sure that we are respectful of staff's times to send cars out, just those little details that some of us haven't done before and perhaps don't even know what the timelines are. I know because I happen to have a conversation, I didn't even ask about it. I wasn't even gonna send cars, but it came up on a conversation. But I think it's a good time with the new others coming on board, the people like us that haven't really used staff that much and the people that that have been in council longer to just lay out the current situation and refresh the expectations. I don't think we need to wait for that. We should be able to do that in the next meeting if possible. Have Karen's first, Chief of Staff will be right there with that, on that tone.
Thank you, Alder Figaro, call. Hope there are any other thoughts on this? I mean, we, you know, have have had some intense discussion for the next two, for the last two hours. And so I'm hoping that we're, we're moving towards, you know, some action items for our next meeting and and action items related to these two things. I think for onboarding, it sounds like we're, we've got a plan going forward. Alder Figaro, call, go ahead.
So I feel that Harper has said that he had more, more, something else to share.
I appreciate you pointing that out, Harper. Were there's more that you wanted to share related to onboarding?
Yes, um, thank you. I was trying to look for the button to raise my hand, so I was actually just raising my hand. I didn't see that. But yeah, I actually wanted, that's the reason why I wanted to share my screen. If I can get five minutes, I know we had performance management or performance review on the agenda. And I did want to take about five minutes. I thought about different things since we
I mean, so, you know, so not that it matters too much. Do we, do we want to just move on to that item? And and probably, you know, closely, not, you know, we could certainly go back to onboarding if necessary, but sort of move on to that that particular item and start talking about some of the things. I know you, you know, you and I talked very, very briefly today about that.
Sure. And I think it's actually an appropriate segue into that next item in regards to the onboarding and and the review. One of the things that can can get uncomfortable, I think the expectation, this is a department head level position. And if you don't have the, you know, an appropriate budget right now to support development for not only Karen but her her staff as well, I would encourage you all to give consideration to that going forward. And it's one of the deals where the expectation is, is that, you know, Karen, you understand some of the possible gap strengths, you know, different things you want to put some work into. And and the expectation is with other department heads is that we would take the initiative. I think within this first year, we, you know, we are discussing an onboarding plan, we're building some of these things out. I think it's probably more appropriate to have some of these discussions. But as far as going forward, I don't, I I I don't, I'm throwing this out there because I don't want you all, Karen or you all, to feel that there should be like, hey, I'm, you know, I'm in this workshop, you know, getting approval. We have staff at all various levels signing up for different city trainings, folks signing up for external trainings. And I just want you all to come to a comfortable place where Karen feels comfortable getting any support that she feels she may need for herself or her team. So that's, that's really one of the reasons why, you know, I would prefer to have some of these conversations offline and then before coming to the larger group. But while saying that, um, part of this as well is, you know, a conversation about performance reviews. And I think some of the stuff that we do with other department heads may very well be easy, really appropriate for Karen to do. So if I can, if if folks are comfortable, I'll I'll move to that conversation and I can bring up a couple of documents to show folks.
Yeah, so go ahead. So I will move on to agenda item seven one eight zero zero, which is Chief of Staff Oversight slash Performance Review Process. Also, you know, intended to be like our last item, really start the discussion around setting expectations and some sort of process going forward.
Sure. So a couple of documents I just want to show you all, all department heads, we do have annual reviews with the mayor. One thing I do want to caution folks on is that if we've gone back and forth in regards to whether or not folks feel it's a good idea to have annual performance reviews. We really try to center these reviews around development, looking for ways to support folks. The reason we go back and forth is that sometimes you'll have situations in which if there's something that you can easily address at the moment, have those conversations, feel comfortable having those conversations with folks. If it's C C E C, if it's another Alder, whoever, don't keep this ongoing list and then wait until the anniversary period of of Karen's hire to say like, hey, this is, you know, November sixteenth, you made this comment, I would appreciate if you approached me first. Or, you know, October thirteenth, the way you shared this information or whatever. We want folks to dress folks, but this annual check-in, executive check-in process that other department heads go through, I think, again, it would be very appropriate for Karen as well. Part of this is set up, we review information, there's a H R D C R dashboard, I'll show that in a moment. Has information in regards to demographics of the office in comparison to the rest of the city, information in regards to staff turnover, staff promotions, civil rights goals, as far as who's getting hired. We've also been in discussions in regards to three sixty performance reviews. That's an opportunity to get feedback from from you all, as well as Karen's peers, other folks in the office possibly. And another part of this that that I think is really helpful is that prior to this meeting, there's some agency questions and and I'll share this with, I'll share this with you, President Furman, and you can figure out how to, you want to share this with other folks on C C E C. But it'll give Karen an opportunity to respond such questions as departments' top goals, priorities, how this department contributes to the city's missions, highest quality service for common good, priorities identify reflective of the agency's work plan. So this is just a great opportunity to just kind of sit down and and go through some of those things. Then there's also the executive expectation, these are checklist questions that Karen will have the opportunity to respond to. And it's, again, I think it'd be very appropriate for you all to have something similar for Karen. I'll share this with you all. I think it's totally fine if you all want to make some adjustments to this. If there's some things that you feel may be less important or more important, totally fine. And we can support you all as far as getting some of the data to to have those engaged conversations. Again, this is the questions, this is kind of an overview in regards to what that executive check-in will look like. One more document I wanted to kind of give you an idea, see what you're looking at. So this is the information that would accompany those meetings. This is, I feel accomplished, and information for human resources.
Harper, just so you know, we're not seeing your screen change. We just still see an onboarding plan.
Okay, um, I thought I was
and start sharing again, it usually fixes it.
It's like turn the power on and off. Is that what that's like, Alder Foster? Thank you. Yep, that did the trick.
Are you all seeing this document right now where it says R Madison? Okay, thank you for sharing that. I was, I thought you all were with me, and I
I'm sorry, the document that we're seeing is Human Resources at Glance.
Okay, well, I'll go back to, let me stop and start again. Do you see R Madison?
Yes, now we do. Thank you.
Third time's the charm.
Okay, my apologies. Um, as I was going through this document, and I was talking about the agency questions that that Karen could respond to prior to the meeting, so that you have those responses in advance. These are the questions. I'm, I'll share this document with you, President Furman, and you can disseminate that information as you see fit. You all can make adjustments to some of these questions. I'm going to stop and I'm going to pull up that agency at a glance information, because that's the the data in regards, the information that will be provided from civil rights and human resources. Let's see if this works. Do you all see, see a massive departmental staffing at a glance? So this will give you an idea when you have those annual check-ins, it'll give you information about the demographics, citywide, as well as for the department. There's information in regards to if there are opportunities to hire, information on the applicants, as well as the outcomes, who was hired. You'll get information in regards to staff turnover, staff promotions, civil rights goals, as far as the use of equitable workforce goals, the usage of racial equity, the the racial equitable hiring tool. Just a lot of good information on there. If there are any A P M three dash five complaints in the previous year, if they're sustained. So again, I I I think it would be helpful for you all, we can have a conversation offline. We can tweak this document if there's different information that you think would be helpful for you all going forward when you're having those annual check-ins. It's, it's, we really just started doing this with with, with the mayor within the past year and a half. We have, it's a, it's a work in progress, but so far, I think department has appreciated the opportunity to actually talk about their work plans, different priorities that they have for their departments. There's user discussion in regards to, you know, support that the agency may need, support development that the agency head would like to try to undergo within the upcoming year, staffing issues, concerns. Also a good opportunity to have a conversation in regards to, for us, in regards to the mayor's priorities. You all can, again, I assume you all will actually have these conversations regularly with us, with the mayor, having twenty eight department heads plus her own staff. She probably doesn't, she probably doesn't have the capacity that you all may have for Karen. But it's, again, it's a great opportunity to actually just touch base and and make sure that those expectations are aligned.
Thank you. Sure. No, that, that's helpful. Go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm saying, I I rushed through getting this information to you all. I will share some documents with you all. I'm happy to tweak these documents. But I think it'll be helpful before any tweaking is done to actually have conversation with a smaller group. I'd love to get Karen's input as well as council leadership. And I just want to say, like, I'm not rushing you all, because N B A playoffs started tonight. I just, I'm sensitive to the fact that I know you all have been gone for a few hours, and I just want to support you all doing whatever it is that you need to do.
Thank you, Harper. Appreciate that. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Also appreciate it, Harper, and I'm glad we had this conversation early in in the C C E C tenure, and I think it's something we got to continue. I'll probably suggest something similar to what I suggested on the onboarding plan, which is, you know, I mean, fortunately, Karen as an agency head and as a kind of, you know, very high level employee, I'd love you to kind of take a lead on. It's a little bit weird since it's like, well, it's about your own performance eval, but actually it's, I think it's also great. So I, you know, my hope would be that you could really take a lead, you know, working with H R. I think, I think working with council leadership, you know, in preparation of sort of a draft or a proposal that you could come and bring back to C C E C, that feels like perhaps the the best way to start. I know at least personally, I don't have any specific idea of how we would go about this. And I think it's gonna be really challenging for C C C to kind of develop that from scratch. So I I would love it if you felt comfortable and take the lead on that and and work on bringing something back for us to to respond and react to.
Thank you, Alder Foster. This was, this was, I think, an incredibly helpful introduction. So thank you so much, Harper. And thank you for Karen, for all the work that I know you've been putting in, doing with, without us having a formal discussion like this. I will work with Harper, Karen, and and Vice President Curry to come back with more, likely at our next meeting, but this, this will be an ongoing discussion at our meetings. I think probably will be a standing item called Council Office, where we can hit on capacity, where we can hit on the onboarding, hit on where we are with this stuff and make sure that we're having, you know, productive, inclusive conversations. So thank you, everybody, so much for 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 this this evening. If there's no objection, I would like to very briefly move on to our next item. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Sorry, just one last point for City Attorney Haas, maybe also at a at a future meeting. It might be good to just get an, get a kind of an update around use of closed session. So obviously, it's a little bit of a different scenario where we're a body, they're supervising someone. I think my understanding is obviously for anything related to discipline, you know, et cetera. But I believe we can also go into closed session for, for like periodic, you know, performance reviews. So that might be good to just get some specifics, attorney. So that might be good to just get um some specifics, um Attorney Haas on kinda what, if there are any guidelines or thresholds for that. And maybe we could also work to incorporate that in if we are getting regular updates from the Chief of Staff at every meeting or every other. Maybe we also wanna do like on a quarterly basis, we plan on having at least a, a noticed closed session in case there are um any things that we wanna do there. I think we should also just be thoughtful and sensitive around that and make sure there is opportunities to have, um, you know, conversations that are maybe more appropriate for there and make sure that we're doing it within the bounds of open meetings. So, um, perhaps City Attorney Haas could prepare something to share with us at the next uh discussion.
I greatly appreciate you bringing that up, Alder Foster. I think that's incredibly helpful. And this is intended to be helpful discussions. And I think there are certain times where we're gonna veer into things where um, it's just not appropriate to be talking about publicly and I, knowing the framework for that, I think is incredibly helpful. Thank you. Okay, if, as long as there's no objection, I would like to just very quickly move on to our next item, which is seven, one, seven, seven, one, seven, one, one. Um, one of the things that um I've liked to do, I've liked doing in the past, um, as, as Chair of Committees, is really talk about what to expect at our next committee meeting. Um, you know, we, uh, I'm not aware of anything that's actually referred to our next um, uh, meeting. Um, but I do, do have a, a, a pretty long list of different discussion items. Um, I think we're very much gonna focus on this continued discussion about hybrid meetings. Um, I think uh, an office update is, is certainly appropriate. Um, we're gonna probably spend a lot of time on both of those, um, you know, uh, based on tonight. Um, but some other stuff that, um, curious if anybody has any strong feedback on everything, for anything from, um, you know, if you see the attachment, we've got, you know, possibly council budget stuff. Um, Karen, um, I'll put you on the spot. Do you, do you think the council budget, um, and some of the things you wanna discuss around that, especially also including some of the stuff we discussed tonight? Do you think the council budget's in a position where you wanna start talking about structure and, um, you know, laying the foundation for um, future discussions at our next meeting? Or do you want a little bit more time on that?
I think we need to definitely do it um sooner rather than later in terms of June. I think that we wanna get out ahead of any time, you know, of when we have to submit our agency request, cause I do have some things I wanna flag for this group. Um, but of course I would not mind, uh, you know, if you wanna give me a, a little bit extra time, that is at your discretion.
Okay, yeah, I don't, um, and so I think if we did it on like the twenty-ninth, for example, that probably gives you enough breathing room opposed to saying two weeks from now. Okay. Um, that, that certainly helps. Um, some of the other, we, some of the other stuff, um, which, uh, you know, we're sort of in the middle of, um, and so might be helpful is uh Alder onboarding and ongoing training. Um, those are long discussions that we're gonna have. Um, we have an overdue um update on through a one consultant when we have time. We have a presentation about um legal Wisconsin municipalities, um, annual conference. Um, that's been floating around for a while. Um, video recordings of BCC meetings, Alder Pay, um, referendum, BCC structure. There's a lot of things we can talk about. I don't know if anybody has strong opinions about some of those topics for our next meeting, other than I will definitely tell you, we're gonna talk more about hybrid and more about the office. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Can you just briefly say what referendum uh means in this context?
Oh, sure. Um, so uh, there was a, 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 a question on the ballot. Um, I, why don't, why don't I do a little bit more offline, but that, that has to do with, um, uh, we had ballot questions, um, and uh, the intent of the council was to decide whether or not we were going to, there were non-binding ballot questions, whether or not we're gonna do binding questions. Um, I can send you more details on that.
But it's follow-up, follow-up from the.
The previous non-binding, yeah, whether or not we wanna have binding. Um, TFOG's Implementation Work Group was looking at that. We're gonna have CCEC look at it and try to structure some recommendations for the council to either uh vote down or, or, or vote um to have. And we, we certainly don't wanna leave that to the last minute. Um, if it went that show, I, I can, I'll certainly send you more details on that. And if it might, it shows up on the agenda, there's certainly um will be um some of the attached history that, that exists and register on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are there any, I mean, I'm happy also the, to figure out these topics, but did wanna give everybody an opportunity if they had any, and if they felt strongly, uh, any of those things I listed or anything that they're thinking about should be at our next six fifteen meeting. Um, with again, the idea that we, we probably are setting ourselves up to have a ton of work at our next meeting. And, um, you know, there certainly needs to be prep work for that. So, uh, we, you know, certainly don't want too much. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I had to make sure the baby was quiet once I turned my mic on. Um, I, I, I just wanted to give my two cents. I really, I, and I think you kinda said this, but I wanted to make sure that we are definitely going to be working on the onboarding for the new alders. Is that one of the top, uh?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. I will tell you that the onboarding for the new alders, um, we have sort of just been, um, I, I, I have been working with council staff and, and, uh, and, and Vice President Curry on, on winging it based on previous on, onboarding. And so, for example, all the new alders um, are being encouraged to meet with all of their new colleagues. Um, uh, I think long-term, I'd like to actually have um more of a script for that, um, just suggestions on here are things you should talk about. Um, and, and then really, you know, get into, um, you know, making that a, a written recommendation. Um, I'm, I'm encouraging them to um watch all of the previous orientations. I don't think we're at a point where we're gonna do new orientations between now and twenty twenty-three. Um, so watching the twenty twenty-one um orientations. And I did um implement, um, as I've nailed all alders about this, um, uh, I've re-implemented the mentoring program. And the difference between previous mentoring programs is, um, I've asked people to volunteer and give a little bit of information about themselves, their interests. And I'm letting the new alders actually pick their mentor, um, opposed to just assigning a mentor. Um, and so far that I think that's working out well. So we do have the immediate onboarding kind of, um, you know, jerry-rigged and, um, and going forward. But I do think that, um, this, this board really needs to figure out how to do that, right? I mean, I mean, I'm even seeing just little things that I was like, oh, you know, I, I thought we told them, uh, new alders that and, uh, you know, uh, and trying to take note of that. So, um, we do have a, a much more comprehensive, evolved um onboarding plan. So I don't think there's an immediate need there to um figure that out, um, you know, uh, this month, for example. Um, uh, but I do think, you know, the long-term work is important. And if you have ideas in the meantime, um, certainly feel free to share. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Alder Bennett.
Um, two things. What, I, I, what is council budget? Like what are we?
Yeah, um, so, um, so the council itself, or the council office has a budget. Um, you know, as, as our, our new Chief of Staff, as she has joined, has been trying to um, uh, fi- figure out, um, the, uh, how that is structured and is that structured appropriately? Um, does that have enough um information for somebody who's never dealt with the budget to, to understand it? Um, Karen has dealt with the budget, but what she's finding is there, there are probably not as clear categories as we would probably like long-term. And I think there are opportunities uh for, for, as a council, for us to discuss. Um, for example, you know, we talked about staff training before. Is there actually money in the budget for that? If there isn't, how much should we be asking for that? Um, are we properly, properly, um, you know, grouping things? Um, so, so some of it's just, um, you know, here are the current numbers or, or do we think the categories are transparent enough and make a lot, enough sense? And some of it is, what, what should we be funding more? Um, because we never talk about funding less, uh, but what should we be funding more? And really, uh, you know, try to give some feedback on that. So the council budget that we see and the, um, the executive budget, um, the proposed budget by the mayor is more reflective of what, uh, the council would like to see opposed to, um, you know, you know, us trying to be reactive to that later on.
Okay, that's cool. And then the six fifteen meeting, I know you said it's long, but that's long. There's a lot on that agenda, like, and I don't necessarily think they're high, they're, they're, they need to be done right away. Like, can some of that be moved to a future meeting?
Um, I, yeah, I say, I think the, the six fifteen, yes. I mean, so if you're looking at the spreadsheet, the six fifteen um agenda is certainly, that is not set in stone. And I, and I, and I absolutely agree with you. There's no way we're putting most of this on there. Um, uh, you know, so I'll, I'll certainly move that around and conserve a new version. It sounds like I'm not hearing anybody shout and say, hey, we absolutely need to look at this at six fifteen, other than, uh, the two things that we, we definitely talked about, which is hybrid and and just our continued discussion about the council office. So yes, you will not see all of that on the agenda for six fifteen. I promise you that. Um, all, all of what's in that spreadsheet attached to the legislative item.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Uh, one thing that was showing on the six-two, which is the council, the budget, council budget, that is one that I think we should consider at least getting an initial conversation on at the, the six fifteen and, or at least understand where, what the timeline is for that, um, et cetera. So that will be one I would advocate that we start a conversation on sooner than later. Um, and then, uh, also for the three, one, one update. Um, I also think, I mean, it could potentially get pushed to the six twenty-nine and we could follow, follow up with Sarah on that one, but I'd like to not probably have that one go beyond June. It'd be good for everybody to get a sense of what's going on with that, uh, with that project. And then one other item I just wanted to share for a, for a future, certainly not, uh, urgent and not needed for the six fifteen. But, uh, just a, a conversation or some thinking around some potential, uh, social events for, for council. I know that's come up in the past and we've talked about some of the, the struggles with us as a body and, you know, just trying to build better relationships. And, you know, we're already in June. So, um, I mean, we, I think folks could maybe do some thinking of it offline, but it'd probably be good to actually just have it on, uh, either as its own agenda, or maybe it could be part of a chief of staff update or something. But I think that'd be a good topic to not lose sight of.
Appreciate that. I'd certainly have some ideas and I've talked to staff and, um, about ideas. And so, um, having that as a, a discussion, um, will certainly be helpful. So I will work with, um, Karen and, and Vice President Curry on, on our next agenda. Um, I, I don't, you know, I wanna make sure we're being reasonable about what we can get done, um, and, but I do appreciate all the feedback today. And, um, uh, you know, don't be shy if you think of something after this meeting that you, uh, you wanna still consider. Um, so with that in mind, um, I, I, I'm so grateful for everybody's time this evening. And Alder Conklin, I think you're gonna say what I, what I'm looking for.
Of course I am. Motion to adjourn, please.
Second by Alder Bennett. Um, unless I see any objection, I'm gonna assume, uh, yeah, I'm a consent. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night.